Hey, good mor—uh, good afternoon. Been a long day already.
Good afternoon.
Uh, well, today is April Fools. We really don't have any—anything planned for you to trick you on anything. So, we're glad that you're here today on April 1st, 2019. Uh, let's see, only nine more months shopping for Christmas, so we need to get at it. So, we appreciate that you're here, um, on April 1st for our county commission meeting. So, a couple of things we begin our meeting with. We're gonna have the pledge, um, and then, uh, first thing we do is it's been the tradition of this board and boards all across our country since our founding, that we do something called a solemnizing prayer, and a solemnizing prayer by definition is for the commissioners. It's not for you. Uh, so, it's a time for us to focus and, uh, bring some, uh—it solemnizes our time because we believe what we do here is important. We take it very seriously, and we look for wisdom as we make decisions on behalf of this county. So, Commissioner, if you'll join me, we'll get started.
Father, we come to you today. I just want to thank you for these commissioners for what they do each and every day. I ask you to grant them wisdom, grant them strength and unity in every decision that they make, that you'll just guide them in each step that they take, just be with them, and just strengthen them in everything that they do, just be with this meeting today, and just guide and lead it, and we thank you again for what you are doing with these commissioners and in their lives. In thy name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So, we're used to having our chaplain, Michael Taylor, here today, and he wasn't able to join us. We appreciate his son filling in very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for coming. Appreciate it. All right, uh, Commissioners, we have the agenda before us. Does anyone have any additions or deletions, any changes to the agenda? Or if not, do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Uh, the minutes for March 18th, our last meeting, have been provided. Any changes to the minutes, corrections anyone needs to make? Or if not, motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Consent agenda's been provided for us, items A through E, a motion to assu—uh, um, motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone for public comment? All right, Mr. John Franklin Cox, a second. Welcome. Glad you're here.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. Got some packets. Go ahead. Um, as you said, my name's John Cox. I've lived in Rowan County my whole life, 34 years. Been an engineer with Norfolk Southern Railroad for—well, I've been employed by Norfolk Southern Railroad for 17 years, been a locomotive engineer for five. Um, I've come in front of you today because there's a very important bill being introduced in the General Assembly, and it's a, uh, it's a public safety bill dealing with crew size regulation. This bill's picked up bipartisan support. Senator Norman Sanderson, the Senate Republican Joint Caucus Leader's primary sponsor on it. Republican Representative Jerry Carter, co-primary. This bill deals with the amount of people operating trains. You've got Limwood right up the road, huge rail yard, tons of traffic moving through the county and the city. This is important. It's a safety concern. Right now, with all the crossings, if a train stops with a problem, and fire truck, ambulance, whatever needs to get by, conductor goes back and does that. Engineer doesn't. Um, the railroads, I don't know if any of y'all seen the 60 Minutes segment not long ago about PTC, Positive Train Control. The railroads think that this can take place of a conductor, and it's technology, it's great technology, but it's not made to replace a part of the crew. It was made to supplement, make things safer. Um, there's a lot of good information in that packet, and I won't bore you with all that, but I'd love to answer questions if y'all have it. What I'm asking is for this board to help show support, um, let our General Assembly know that this is important. I mean, Rowan County has a lot of traffic, train traffic through it, and, uh, we need to start at the local level and work up. We need to let these guys know that we're all supporting them, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Cox. The card that we have on here is for Ronald Ingric, and so, if we have any questions, is that who we need to contact?
You could contact—yeah, Mr. Ronald Ingric, he is back here at the, at the back. He could, uh—I can answer questions if you have it now, or, you know, if you want to take time to read through the packet, digest it. Any questions that come up, feel free to contact him.
It's fine. We can study this.
Yeah, and I can leave my number as well.
Yeah, if you leave a number with clerk, she can get it to us.
That'll work.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. All right, next up, Ronnie Smith. Ronnie, welcome.
Thank you.
Little energy today, if you would.
Little more energy.
Please.
Jay and I are getting over our Carolina fever from this past week, so I'll try to have a little more energy for you. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name's Ronnie Smith. I'm here today to give you two quick, brief updates on some projects that I think are of interest to you and to every citizen in Rowan County. Number one, on March the 12th, the Spencer Board of Alderman unanimously passed a resolution in full support of the new Yakian River Park project in Davidson and Rowan Counties. After the vote, they received a standing ovation from the citizens attending this meeting. We recently presented you with a similar resolution for your consideration, and if possible, hopefully, you'll be able to include this on your agenda for future consideration. We think that would be an outstanding asset to Rowan County. And secondly, today, this past Friday, March the 29th, marked the anniversary of the National Vietnam Veterans Memorial Day, and earlier this year, as you are aware, the commission agreed on the placement of our Rowan County Vietnam Veterans Memorial in the Salisbury City Park with a proposed installment date of April the 15th in two weeks. Unfortunately, I just came from the city park earlier today, and there's been no progress whatsoever on this project. It's highly improbable now that we'll be able to meet the promised deadlines made by the city. I just came from the city, as I said. No work has been started on the site. Uh, the tennis shed, no work has been started on the removal and demolition of that building, and no work has been started on the elevating of the site in the floodplain. We may need to revisit this project with the city and hopefully establish a deadline in the very near future. Again, this is a project that's dear to my heart, and I thank to many of the more than 10,000 veterans in Rowan County. Thank you so much for your consideration and for these updates on our project. We're proud to be a part of Rowan County. Thank you.
Thank you, Ronnie. We'll follow up on that, okay? All right, item number three, um, Project Kodiak. I don't know if it's Scott or Rod coming up. Scott, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, board members. We're back again today to talk about Project Kodiak. As y'all are aware, we've been working on this one for close to a year now, and we're trying to drag it across the finish line. Um, there's been some changes since the last time I spoke to you, and, uh, hope to keep you updated on that and tell you what else we're here for today as, as far as incentives and additional assistance. Uh, as you are aware, Project Kodiak's an online retailer. They're—they have fulfillment centers across the country. They're looking at the southeast for a new one. If Rowan County were selected, it'd be a new 700,000 square foot facility, um, at the Treeview property at Long Ferry Road and 85. We're competing with South Carolina and Georgia for this project. As proposed, we're looking at a $55 million capital investment in Rowan County through the construction of the new facility and equipment and other improvements. Uh, this investment will be spread out over five years. Back in October, when we first came to you to request assistance for this project, the company pledged to create 600 jobs by the end of 22—2022. Average salary would be about $28,375,000 per year. That's, I guess, about $13.64 an hour. And, uh, again, to recap, on October 1st, you approved a Level 2 grant for the project, which, of course, is equal to 80% of the new taxes paid on the project. At the time, we estimated that value to be about $1.38 million. Two weeks later, on October 15th, you approved a $100,000 equipment grant for the project as well, and they are the original projections that I think you have in your packet. Since we last presented this project, the parameters have changed. The company has said now they're willing to commit to 1,250 jobs for this project. Those would be created by the end of 2025. The pay is pretty much the same, a little over $28,000 a year on average, and the investment is the same, $55 million. As a result of this substantial job increase, the company has asked us to approach the board about considering additional incentives for the project. As I mentioned earlier, this is highly competitive. I mentioned South Carolina and Georgia, but right now, it looks like South Carolina is our primary competition for the project. So, again, in an effort to win this thing for Rowan County, we're asking the board to consider extending this Level 2 grant from five years to 10 years. However, during the final five years of the grant, what we're proposing is that the tax grant be equal to 50% of the value, not 80%. It'd be 80% for the first five years. By extending this to 10 years, the county would still collect its 3.5 million, but the grant award to the company would increase from 1.38, that I mentioned earlier, to just under 2.3 million over 10 years. That would decrease the amount the county would keep over 10 years from 2.1 million to about 1.25 million. There's the numbers for this project. In addition to this tax incentive grant extension, we also asked the board to consider increasing the equipment grant from 100 to $400,000. Of course, that's the money that comes from the county's economic development funds. This equipment grant, like I mentioned earlier, back in October, could only be used for trade equipment or tenant outfits. Combining the two together, this would increase the package to Project Kodiak from 1.48 million to 2.69, just under $2.7 million. Now, there would be conditions on these incentives. There'd be job creation goals for both grants. On the screen there and in your packet is what we're proposing for the Level 2 incentive grant, where they'd have to create 750 jobs by year two. Starting in year four, they'd have to bump up to 1,000 jobs, and then years six through 10, 1,250 jobs. For the equipment grant, um, the, uh—I'm sorry, to go back to the incentive grant, of course, it'd be an installments over 10 years, and like all the other grants, they'd have to pay their taxes first before they would get this property tax grant paid to them. And, of course, if the grant were to, uh—the grant could be reduced if the investment didn't meet the amount we mentioned, the 55 million.
Would you go back—I'm sorry, Daryl.
Sure.
Would you go back a page?
Sure. Right here? Should I go back one more?
Go ahead.
But again, over 10 years. Uh, if they didn't meet the investment goals, of course, the grant would be reduced on a prorata basis until the goals were met, and, of course, if they were to cease operations or eliminate the majority of their workforce, the agreement would be terminated. If it was terminated, they'd be required to repay the previous 36 months of grant payments. But, uh, in regards to the equipment grant, this is a one-time cash grant upfront for equipment. It would be in the early years of the project, most—more than likely. So, with that in mind, we're suggesting the 750 job goal for this grant, because that's the same amount for the first two or three years of the, uh, of the project. And, of course, it'd be a forgivable loan. They'd have to, um, they'd be forgiven on a percentage basis if the jobs are maintained over five years. One other thing that I've mentioned that I need to, I guess, refresh the board's memory on, if you had forgotten, but, uh, this site does not have sewer, and we have worked with Salisbury Rowan Utilities on servicing the property. They're estimating that it would take a 16-inch gravity line under 85 to serve the property. The estimate price—estimated price on that's 1.5 million, and, of course, the extension would bring the property closer to the Carlton site, which is about 1,500 feet down from the Treeview property. There's a map of the extension that's designed by SRU. Now, we have, uh—the state has recommended a $1.5 million CDBG grant to pay for the extension. We feel it's likely to be approved at their April 18th meeting of the Rural Infrastructure Board. Though it will be likely approved on that date, the county would still have to formally apply for the grant, and you may recall several months back, you took the first step in that process by holding that courtesy public hearing about CDBGs in general. That was one step that's done. This would be the formal application. No need to submit it until Kodiak makes the decision, and if it is announced by the state of North Carolina. But, again, the CDBG program requires a 25% local match. It's our understanding that the incentives we've requested here today will normally be counted toward that grant, that grant match, so I think we're good there, but that's not going to be determined officially till that April 18th meeting, and if they were to decide that, for whatever reason, because it's all discretionary, but if they were to decide for whatever reason you couldn't count that grant, then there would still be that 25% match, which is up to $375,000. We feel very good that that will be the case, that they will consider these incentives, but just want to make you aware of that in case, for whatever reason, they do not. In closing, as mentioned earlier, the company would create 1,250 new jobs by the end of 2025. In addition, based on multiplier supplied by the Economic Policy Institute, we estimate it would create an additional 4,400 indirect and induced jobs that would be created to serve this project. And again, $55 million in new investment, and, uh, the county would provide a $400,000 equipment grant through their economic development funds. The company would also receive a Level 2 grant for 10 years, and over that time, the county would keep about $1.25 million in new tax revenue. And also, we see this as a good opportunity to spur development in North Rowan County. So, again, we hope the board will consider these requests and help us try to win this project for our community. So, be glad to answer any questions you may have about what we're proposing. I know it's a lot to take in.
Um, just for the public's edification, can you explain how strong our clawback provisions are? Because this is a lot of money.
Yeah, uh, as Commissioner said, we do have callbacks in place for it, and basically, again, if the company were to eliminate the majority of its workforce or close down, uh, the grant would terminate. The company would be required to pay the preceding—the previous 36 months worth of payments, three years worth of payments, back to the county. In addition to that, uh, this grant is based on that $55 million investment goal. If they were to only meet, let's say, 80% of that investment amount, then the grant would be reduced by 20%. So, uh, there's measures in place for that, and also in regards to the equipment grant, it's a forgivable loan, but again, if they don't meet the job goals, then the loan's not forgiven. They'd have to pay that back.
Yeah, the total 10-year package is 2.1?
About 2.3 million.
2.3, but that's an accumulation of 10 years' worth. So, let's say in the fifth year, uh, I don't know what the fifth year is, but by the fifth year, what's the fifth year, Scott?
Yeah, during the fifth year of the grant, the company, their grant amount for that year would be about $291,000. The county—the county would keep about 72 during that span, so yes, the 2.3 million grant is spread out over 10 years. They would not receive that amount every year. That's the total amount.
Yeah, so it's—it's not a 2.3 upfront, and then we would only get three years of it back. They're—they're paying every year, and we're rebating that tax.
Yeah, you'd be rebating 80% of the grant, or 80% of the taxes as a grant to the company. The county would keep 20%, but then year—year six through 10, they would get half of it back, and the county would keep half of it. They'd have to pay first before they got the money back.
Scott, this—if 1,250 jobs are filled within five-year period of time, um, where would this rank as far as the employer—in the employees of Rowan County? Would it—
I think it'd right away be likely—at least one of our top 10 employers, if not top five, right away. This would likely be the largest job announcement, at least in the history of the EDC, maybe the county as well. I mean, I know stats likely don't go back to the days of, you know, the man bus factory or when, you know, Selene's opened up years ago, but as far as our organization, it'd be the largest ever, and, uh, you know, we feel that the chances are good of there being even more jobs down the road, but these are the numbers they're willing to commit to at this point, 1,250 jobs.
And the—the grant for the economic development, uh, would that be paid—how would that be paid to the company?
As far as the equipment grant?
Yes. Would it be paid upfront, and would there be callbacks in that as well?
Well, it'd be a forgivable loan, so, so really, if they didn't meet the job goals, they would have to pay back the grant. It'd be a certain percentage forgiven every year, is that correct, Mr. Dees? Like, 20% is forgiven each year for five years of the—of the equipment grant amount?
But I think they actually have to submit invoices to show that they're qualified expenses before we give them the money.
Okay.
So, we don't just give them 400,000. I think they spend the 400,000, and then they submit that to the county, and we review it for qualified expenses, and then we disperse the money.
At least on the prorata basis for five years.
Then once the money's dispersed, it's—it's five years, and it's forgiven 20% per year if they hit the goals.
Well, that's—that's the point I wanted to make sure that—
And I believe—in a finer point on the—the job creations, I believe the job creation piece is a prorata, so we don't have necessarily clawback on the job if they create a—
They miss it by 100.
Yeah, if they—if they miss it by 100, they—we only reduce it by a prorata portion, so, um, so we don't clawback that piece of it, but we reduce it to the extent that they don't perform the actual numbers.
Yeah, and we also feel too, as I mentioned earlier, with the CDBG grant, a certain percentage of those jobs have to be targeted toward low to moderate income households, so I think this would be, you know, a real boon for families that are—have unemployment issues or underemployment issues, and, uh, and also too, just for North Rowan in general. We think growth's coming to Rowan County, but it's obviously going to happen in the south end first, just because of Charlotte. This would be a real jumpstart for that area. We could see Long Ferry Road really, you know, having new businesses sprout up to serve a lot of these people that work at this—this company, so.
And just—just to clarify, they do provide full benefits?
That's correct. That's one of the requirements of state incentives. They would have to require—to supply benefits and pay at least 50% of the employee premium. That—that's a state requirement, so these would be benefits.
Thanks.
So, Scott, the, um, so will this, um, project take up most of—or if all of the Treeview site?
Yes, it would take up all of it. There would be nothing usable left, just because of the sheer size of the building itself, uh, and then also with parking and truck courts, uh, what I mean, but there's adjoining property that might be open for development, but Treeview would be, I guess, utilized as much as it could be at this point.
And so, I guess the—really, the benefit that I guess we probably haven't—we've mentioned, but probably under-realizes the sewer being run under the interstate force. And how far away is the Carlton property from the Treeview?
It's about 1,500 feet from the—where the sewer would stab out—stop out at the, um, I guess, the eastern side of the Treeview property, so.
So, I guess, is there any way to quantify the—how more valuable that site is once sewer is that close?
I wouldn't know offhand. I'm sure an appraiser could tell us, but, uh, just to have it closer, this, you know, again, just helps open up that corridor. And, uh, just getting back to the project itself with the sewer, uh, we, you know, one of the most time-consuming things for that project would be the boring permit, and that's already been obtained by SRU, so that should help, and the estimated time for this construction project's about six months. I don't think that includes maybe bidding the job out, but we feel pretty comfortable that it'll be done in time for the building. Uh, it's our understanding the building would have to be, uh, open in March of next year.
Well, I wouldn't really ask in, you know, a dollar amount, but I was saying, just the interest that we may be getting for that site now, that sewer's going to be that close, and I think natural gas is going to be there also, part of this?
Yeah, yeah, that's another thing too with the project is, uh, Piedmont has told us they will be extending natural gas, uh, west on Long Ferry Road toward the property. It's—there's a, I guess, a—the line's about a mile—mile east of the site right now, but they will be extending it as part of this project, so that—that—a further enhancement to the Carlton property, and, of course, everything else between, um, the main line and the Treeview property.
Well, I guess maybe these incentives are a little bit out of the ordinary for us, but this is a very extraordinary project for the county, so I'm excited.
And we're hopeful—to have word on it sometime, uh, maybe later this month, based on what we've been told from the company and from the state. It's not a definite, but we feel, uh, pretty strongly that we'll—we'll be at an announcement soon, uh, maybe around the 18th, when this Rural Infrastructure Board meets, but it may depend on the company's schedule, so. But, uh, again, South Carolina is really in a strong position for the project, and unfortunately, every dollar's going to count to help win this, so.
Usually, uh, when—when we have this many jobs, uh, will they not coordinate with Rowan Cabarrus Community College to help train employees?
Yes, some of their consultants came down—
Or qualify, if not train?
Yes, some of their consultants came down a few weeks ago, and that was the main focus of their meeting, was labor. They, uh, wanted to meet with existing companies. They wanted to meet with NC Works, Central Anna Workforce Development Board, Rowan Cabarrus. I mean, that was a big, big portion of their visit, and I think they—they got satisfactory answers that we could meet their, uh, labor needs, so.
Wonderful.
All right, Scott, thank you. We'll, uh—we're going to have a—a public hearing now, so we're going to open the floor for a public hearing. If there's anyone from the general public that would like to bring up anything or discuss, seeing none, then we'll close the public hearing, and, uh, Commissioners, we would need a motion to approve, uh, the new incentive grant for Project Kodiak.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second and a third. Any, uh, any further discussion? Guys, good job on this. I did—there's no one on that side of the room hadn't been involved in it, and Piedmont Gas and Duke, and this has been a big one. The project life—the—the life of a project is just so long, and you pour so much into it, um, but I've—I've been really proud of the EDC lately. I've told folks that it seems like in the past, or seems like there's so much more we could have done after you get done with, uh, and kind of look back, and in the last few that we've had, um, I've walked away and just said, "There's just nothing more we could do." Uh, I think we've even been on our knees a couple of times, so, um, I'm—I'm proud of what all you guys are doing, planning department included, because I know they come in and meet with them as well. So, uh, looking forward to good news in, uh, April, and hopefully, this will be a—this will certainly be big—be big news across the whole state and across the region, bring us some attention. Can be a feeder project. Folks will say, "Man, what's going on in Rowan County?" And so, this is a good thing, so really excited. This is good for everybody in Rowan County, pay property taxes to help us with schools and things we're looking at now, but also those making less money than this gives them an opportunity to move up, and folks that are paying minimum wage, it's going to be harder for them to find workers, and it—I'll just tell you, in my business right now, I'm paying twice what I paid five years ago, and, uh, that's a good thing for the economy, and so this is going to encourage folks to step up their pay, and that's a good thing. All right, we have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you very much. All right, Shane, uh, approval of building elevation and signage details from our last meeting?
Thank you. All right, let's me pull up. Let's do the easy part first. There were two—the board members back in our meeting on the 18th of last month, there were two, um, conditions. It was conditionally approved, the rezoning, one of which the board wanted to see sign details. So, this would be the proposed signage at the Dollar General facility, ground-mounted, six-foot, and, uh, overall height, and the actual signed advertisement space is, um, 32 square feet. And the—refer back to—it's actually detailed better on the landscape plan. This is a tiny bit different than what you have in your packet, but the location didn't change. There's some, um, little shorter shrubbery around that sign, but did want to pull out that, uh, or draw your attention to that change. So, that's one, and then the building elevation. Let's start—first, start with the picture. So, just reference this for the general idea and the colors of what's proposed, not so much the full detail. Um, I'll draw your attention to a few things that are a little different in the elevation plan itself, but this is the image of what the plan illustrates— in the elevation plan itself, but this is the image of what the plan illustrates here. So with that in mind, we're going to focus on sheet two of those plans. So on the left elevation, which will be opposite of Oregon Church, and the rear elevation, let me take that down one percentage, all of this would be metal, metal siding. Again, that's the back of the building and the opposite of Oregon Church. So the two that face the road would be, this is Oregon Church here, and the references to the predominant facade here on the bottom will be brick, and then this would be hardy board. And then, of course, there's also some hardy here as well along the storefront. This is the window arrangement, the awnings. You can see the side profile, the awning hanging over. In the image, you did see some brick that went vertical between the storefront windows. That is not proposed unless this board would like to see that. The plans here just indicate the hardy board here as well. Same thing for the faux windows, the shuttering. The plan, this plan here calls for five, the picture says four. So again, anything we're referencing, we'll reference the plan. And the image is only for coloring and for overall, just a general guide and what's proposed. And then this is the front elevation facing 152.
What is number eight?
Eight here is the fiber cement panels. A little different than the siding, but all this would be the masonry. So again, from our previous meeting, the board did conditionally approve the project, but with that information discussed, here's the plans that support that. But I'd be glad to answer any other questions. Mr. Strickland's here as well, representing Terramore.
So Shane is, kind of refreshed my memory before we left this, is, definitely this project's going to have a different facade. Was it our, do we convey to Dollar General that this is kind of what we want to see in the future for future Dollar Generals? Or is it a case-by-case basis? Is it just ones that we approve and ones they build on sites that don't need any kind of changes? They'll, you know, build what they have been building? What was, what's the understanding, I guess?
So if they come before the board, requires zone change, that's when we can look at the land use plan and have that as our guide for stores like this. If it's zoned appropriately currently, then, you know, the typical facade, the metal siding, the split-faced block is acceptable.
So would it be, I guess, inappropriate that when they come before us for one that is zone change, that we would have sort of a understanding of what's been put up at the other sites? Or is that something you wouldn't take into account when you're trying to make your decision? How does, so if they've done two or three other sites on places that were zoned correctly and they put up the normal metal building, is that's information that we could use? Or is it inappropriate to have that information when we make our decision for changes?
Well, I feel like in the, in the land use plan, the comments made were for the overall field along the highway quarter. That's sort of big picture, what the board may want to consider in the future of our quarters. But in terms of the community node itself, you could also consider that if it warrants different elevations and some building facade details, some landscaping, I think it's appropriate to look at those and establish it that way. But I do agree, and to your point about different locations, they have a couple of others in mind as well, some of which are permitted by right. So they will look different. And I think that's kind of a given too. If you look at their typical portfolio, they're, they definitely range in location, so that's kind of a given. Unless this board wants, you know, commercial, industrial standards in certain locations, which to me would be more of a quarter base or maybe your nodes.
Well, I was, unless the Commissioners disagree, I thought we were kind of saying, without enforcing anything, that we would like to see more Dollar Generals look a little bit better than what we've been getting, a little more like this, even in areas that we don't have to make decisions upon, unless that's not what we were thinking.
That's a good point, Mike. And I will say that I spoke to someone from that organization and they said, they told me the same thing, that, you know, when it's already zoned right, we can kind of put up what we want. So if y'all want to give us some guidance, you probably should give us some guidance ahead of time. So perhaps we can talk about that, about how we, if and how we provide guidance from here on out, even if it is in a appropriately zoned location. So I don't know if we decide that here, but maybe this week you could, we could talk about that.
True.
Kind of where do we go? Is that a fair?
True.
Is that a fair thing, Mike?
I would really like to see something very concrete, because I don't want our county to be the poor stepsister as we're going up and down I-85. And when we've got all these quarters, especially with all the tourism that we have in our county, we need, as you said last time, we need to step it up a bit.
I think that discussion definitely, in some capacity, we'll need to have because it, there's a lot of implications of that. Any use that comes in, how do you treat them? So that's not anything we've been looked, or looked at before. Again, it's in the plan to talk about, to what capacity and what areas, but we really would have to have either a quarter approach for any non-residential use. You can't have facade standards for residential, but you can for commercial. You typically see that more in municipalities, but we could definitely take a look at that.
Last question is, was anything, when this was provided to you, was there any reason? You said they left out the brick on the front and the side. Was there any reason for that?
I don't think so. You know, there's some other differences in the plan versus the picture, but again, I think it was more of a preference. And maybe they had another facility that the picture didn't line up with this variation, but if the board would prefer to see brick in some capacity, let me pull the picture back up. So we had these two verticals and then one here. Well, actually two, so four total. But you'll see this, this window is four panes, and then these have eight on both sides. Doesn't match the plan, but again...
Who's here from Terramore?
I am, sir.
Would you, I don't know if it's appropriate, but would you, yeah, could we talk about that and?
Absolutely.
You know, what the idea of the brick is, was, is that a big deal?
No, it's not to us. I mean, the rendering is something that we typically use, I'm sorry.
It's all right.
The rendering is something we typically use at other places, and Shane asked us to get an overall exterior plan, so we presented something that we've built in another place. Yeah. And I think it met the criteria, what you guys asked for at the last meeting.
And so the plan that you showed just shows more hardy plank is all?
Correct, yes, sir.
Would it be a big deal to make it brick?
It wouldn't.
One other question. On the, on the sign, any big deal to make that brick instead of metal at the bottom?
Yeah, we can actually enhance it with some brick underneath.
Yeah, could we do that?
Yeah, to encapsulate it. Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'd like to see that too.
We're good with that, for sure.
All right.
Yeah.
Don't want to be a pain, but...
No. And getting back to what y'all were talking about a minute ago about enhancing these buildings, I think the store that we just completed there at Crest Venture, at Carson High School, was a little bit different. I mean, it's the new prototype, it's, you know, and they're continually to upgrade that every year. So I think that store does look a little better than so many other stores you see that were built by some other folks in the area in years past. Yeah. But we did get the message at the last meeting. We had to step the game up. We understand.
Well, thank you.
Yeah.
All right, do we need to vote on anything? We do? Vote to approve the changes, the conditions?
Yes, sir, just to accept those and also the inclusions of the brick and the brick around the sign too.
Back to the landscape plan one more time, please. So the 152, that looks beautiful. Can you come down along Oregon Church Road a little bit? Okay. So you've got the two areas turning in there.
Plus surrounded by the Leland Cypress, all around the border on the bottom and the side.
Yeah, so, yeah. I just think that that really adds a lot, the landscaping, so.
Yeah, we're kind of on that, the upper left-hand side there is our second area, so that's why there's a lot of green grass there.
Got it.
All right, so do we have a motion to approve the building elevation and signage details with the changes in brick on the sign and the side, and the facade?
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Craig, anything? No? All right. Mike, anything? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
All right, thanks. All right. Thank you, Shane. All right, you're up again, SNIA 01-19.
So staff received an SNI permit application from Darden Engineering. It's for the property at 8955 West NC 152 Highway. The proposed expansion would include about 45,000 square foot under roof. Two of those would be storage structures and two metal fabrication structures. Will have also a 30,000 square foot structure that has a roof and one side enclosed, the other two are open, and some additional gravel and some asphalt. This would require an intensity allocation approval by the board. This proposed site plan would extend up to 70% coverage on the site if approved. So we're just a shade over 1% removed now of our 10, and this meets all standards of approval.
This property's already located in a business area. There's businesses all around where this is going to be done and...
Yes, sir, on both sides.
So this is a little different than our typical one, because we don't need help holding public hearings, don't have statements of reasonableness and consistency. Did this go through planning board?
No. I mean, I think there's actually been a few that went through on consent agenda before.
Yeah.
I mean, there's no requirement that comes to this board. Staff could approve it, you know, but that's the way our structure is since 98, that there's no qualifiers for an application. So if it meets the standards and the ordinance, it comes to the board.
How will this affect our watershed total?
Our current...
Even noticeable? I know it's, you've only, you've only put 1% out of 10.
Yeah, .116, so this would take 17 acres out.
Okay.
So, I mean, at some point, we're going to get there, but since 94, we've removed about 1%.
All right, any other questions for Shane? If not, do we have a motion to approve SNIA 01-19?
So move.
Same.
All right, any questions, discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. Commissioner Klussman?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I want to call my friends from PECAR here. That's the Prevent Child Abuse Rowan. And the month of April is the, is the time that we look harder and talk more about preventing child abuse. And we have several special guests. Beth McKeaton, who is the executive director of our local, local Prevent Child Abuse organization. And then assisting her is Alyssa Smith from Healthy Rowan. And so as part of the process of getting the understanding of what the needs are for our youngest people in the county, I asked Beth to come and present and talk, talk about what's going on out there.
Thank you. So as Judy said, my name is Beth McKeaton. I'm the executive director with Prevent Child Abuse Rowan. We are just passing out some materials that you guys can just look over after the presentation, just kind of some follow-up statistical information. I know we've got a little bit of time, so I want to dig right into this. We operate the local child advocacy center, so we work with children in the county that have been exposed to abuse. And so we want to try to take them and transform them into an empowered survivor. So we maintain a lot of statistics. We're nationally accredited by our organization. And so we serve children birth to 18. We, just to kind of give you a background, we see approximately 225 to 250 cases a year. We are directly comparable with our surrounding counties with our caseload. And we have seen a 30% increase in cases over the last four years. So there's a lot of reasons for that. There's, you know, there's a lot going on, but we also are doing a lot of education and awareness, and so that's certainly a contributor to it as well. What we want to do is, with April being Prevent Child Abuse Month and with us really trying to shed a positive light on Rowan County and try to come in and do things for this county that really help the children that we work with, we've been, several of our agencies have been collaborating a lot and talking more about the trauma and what it does to children and how it impacts their brain. And there is a ton, ton, ton of research that has come to light within the last five to 10 years that really talks about the ties between chronic illness, chronic disease, lots of behavior issues that are all linked back to childhood trauma. So if we can put things in place and we can empower this community to do more and be better and help the kids that we serve in this county, we will see the progression and the things getting better in the next few years. So there's a study that I handed out beforehand. It's called the ACEs Study, and it stands for Adverse Childhood Experiences, if you're not familiar with it. For many, many years, they studied folks and it was middle-class, educated, you know, a lot of people just like you and I that they studied and they looked at, you know, how much trauma did you incur as a child? So you can actually take this quiz. I've given each of the Commissioners one to take home with them and, you know, just take it home. And when you look at it yourself about the way that you grew up, it kind of sheds light of, because a lot of us say, you know, well, this happened to me, but I'm doing okay. You know, this was something I had to deal with in my childhood, but you know what, I'm doing fine. And so to really take this study and take it home and personally take it and see kind of what kind of impact it has on your own life, really sheds light on what our kids are dealing with nowadays. Because, you know, we dealt with stuff that, you know, we don't even realize that it affects us in our adulthood. And the more we do this and the more in our profession that we work with people that have experienced childhood trauma, it truly becomes an explanation of why people do what they do. And the more research you do on this... research you do on this, you'll see that, you know, you meet people in public and you say, "I definitely understand why they make these decisions or why they act this way." It's because the trauma had the impact on their brain that it did when they were a child. So, there we go. So we talk about the different areas of trauma. Trauma presents itself. It's however it's perceived for that child. So, you know, the same thing could happen to both of us, but if you perceive it as being traumatic, I mean, not. It just depends on, on the child. But emotional abuse, physical abuse, sexual abuse, emotional neglect, physical neglect, you know, if there's domestic violence in the home, divorce, and, you know, if someone's incarcerated, lots and lots and lots of different things that contribute to trauma. So when we looked at these scores, after this study came out, almost two-thirds of these adults that were surveyed, again, you know, middle-class folks that were fairly well-educated, reported at least one or more ACEs. And so the more, the higher the score that you have, the more chances you have of having chronic illness, chronic disease. And more than one in five reported three or more. And what we know is, when you get up to three or four in your score, we're really having to dig into doing some heavy work and some really good trauma work there. So what we know is that ACEs relate to obesity, chronic disease, and mental health. You know, with collaborating efforts with Healthy Rowan and several other things that are going on right now with our community, you know, with United Way, they're rolling out their top three. And so these are all areas we're trying to target, and we're trying to make better for this community. So really going back to why is this an issue? Why are our numbers what they are compared to surrounding counties? Why are we seeing all this? It's because, you know, this trauma is occurring and we're not really dealing with it properly. So long-term, lifelong implications for these kids. And alcoholism, alcohol abuse, depression, liver disease, multiple sexual partners, higher pregnancy risks, STDs, suicide attempts. I don't know if you guys know, but nationwide, the second highest killer for kids, for death below the age of 18, is suicide. I mean, we have seen, even within our own county, we have seen so many youth suicides because these kids are not getting proper treatment. So we really want to try to address this because if we can prevent one more, you know, our job is done. So what we know is that with children's brains, from zero to age 12, you know, I mentioned this in my last presentation here, that their brains are still growing and developing. And so the trauma that kids incur before the age of 12 has implications, some that we can't get back. So there's some things that we can go in and do trauma work with, and we can try to help, but if it has affected their brain, then we can't always get that back. We can do as much as we can to continue to try to progress, but we can't always, always go backwards. So if you look at this screen, we talk, we look at brain scans, and you can actually see a child's brain that is normal, has not experienced trauma, you know, well-lit. You see, it looks like a Christmas tree. And then you look at those that have had traumatic injuries and experienced trauma, and you can see all the holes and gaps with these kids. And we're expecting them to learn and grow at the same rate as other kids, and it's, it's not really even fair. So it affects the brain. It affects the nervous system. It is a major public health issue. And this is a big part that I want to mention, too, the commissioners. One year of confirmed cases of child maltreatment costs $124 billion over the lifetime of the traumatized child. It's a lot of money. And, and we, you know, what we know is with the kids that we work with, it, it costs a great deal of money to try to get them back to what we would consider to be a normal operating state. You know, one traumatic event, that's all it takes for these kids. So, you know, we really want to tie this into our county. We don't want this to be all doom and gloom. You know, we can do things. We can put things in place to make things better for these kids, to improve quality of life. And it's, we know that it's generational. It's a cycle. I spoke about last time, out of all the families that we've seen, we've had only a handful that the parents were not abused as children. It is a cycle, so we have to stop the cycle. We have to get the proper treatment in place. But there are so many things we do, and we've had these child abuse cases that have been, you know, publicized nationally, and that brings negative light to our county. But what are the things that we can put in place and we can do and we collaborate on to try to bring positive light to this county and say, "You know what? Here are all the things that this county's doing to support these kids and make sure that this community is healthy"? Alyssa, do you want to add?
If you just want to jump ahead and throw flags.
That one, yep.
Do you want me to talk about?
Yeah.
Really quickly, I just want to mention... All right, hello. Really quickly, I just want to mention that we're also seeing an increase in the number of children in foster care, which is a huge issue as well. And we look at, you know, what that means for our community. We've seen a 22% increase over five years, and this is information from Rowan County DSS, and a jump from 181 back in fiscal year 14 to 231 this past year. And then we're also seeing an increase in substance-effective infants, which the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services has several definitions, but one is that the infant when born tests positive. And we've seen an increase, starting the measurement from August 2017, from 56 cases to 164. And the reason that we bring this up is just to, just to mention that they are part of that bigger picture when we talk about ACEs and we talk about childhood trauma, and we talk about what we want to see happen for this community, not just now, but in the future. So we really want to bring in more resources, that trauma resiliency training across the lifespan for these children who are born, for the children who are experiencing trauma, but for adults who have experienced trauma as well here in the community. So thank you so much. Anything else?
Any questions?
I guess, would you please show us your yard sign?
Yes.
Because I wanted to make sure that...
I was just going to wrap up with that. So April nationwide is Prevent Child Abuse Month, and Prevent Child Abuse Rowan actually does this as a fundraiser. So we sell pinwheel kits, and so Commissioner Eds, I think, had one in, at his business last year. And so we would actually like to gift a large pinwheel kit if the commissioners, if that would be okay to you guys. But we have a bundle of pinwheels that you can kind of put out. The pinwheel is the symbol of Prevent Child Abuse because it's to remind us that a child should have a normal, healthy, happy childhood. And so the color blue with the pinwheel both represent Prevent Child Abuse. So April nationwide is Prevent Child Abuse Month, and so we want to just support that as well locally.
What?
Go ahead.
Could you go back over that $124 billion number? I didn't understand that.
That one either.
Let me go back. Yeah. So what we're looking at here, what goes into this number, we're talking about medical bills and mental health cost and in and out, if, you know, those that are in and out of prison and jail and rehabilitation and, you know, just all the things that are, that have been tied back to child abuse that are, you know, it's not always, you know, if someone's jailed, it's not always because of that, but we are seeing more and more that that's really, when you get to the root of it, that's the reason that so many have gone down these paths.
Beth, the number 124 billion, now, that's not for one child in one lifetime.
No. So what they're saying is that, that's the cost of what, when they, you know, the kids that they assess, that's the cost as a total.
Okay. How many kids are we talking about? And is it nationwide or statewide?
Nationwide, I'll have to get you that number.
Nationwide.
Yep, I pulled that from our national level.
Yeah, because that was a little confusing.
Yeah, yeah. You know, but in one year, I mean, that's, you know, that's a lot of money we could save and put towards so many good things. You know, if, if only we could get that prevention in place. And we, you know, we have to help the parents so that they understand how to effectively parent. If you've never been parented to, it's hard to know how to parent. But we want to really start that cycle, and now is the time, the younger the better, to get in with these kids and try to help.
There is one thing I'd like you to share, and that's about the Triple P program. If you could explain that, please.
Sure. So it's actually a statewide initiative. We have partnered with Smart Start Rowan, and there's several other in the county that are implementing this program. We offer it completely for free. We never want cost to be a barrier for these kids. But this is a evidence-based program that teaches parenting empowerment skills. It's four sessions, and so it's totally doable. We'll provide help with transportation if they need it. But we can do it as a group session. We can do it on a personal level, and it works with children, whatever age you have at that moment. So, you know, a lot of people think by the time they get to the teenage years that they're kind of a lost cause, but they're definitely not. This program has its own specialized section for working with teenagers because we know that they can all be a challenge. So, but there's no parenting handbook, and so we want to make it normal that at any socioeconomic background that you are able to come and get parenting help. But it's really a lot of support, and people just are asking questions, and, you know, they see that their lives are changed and they're better parents because of this program. So we're excited to run it.
Program also has a segment for in-home treatment, too, right?
Correct. So we don't offer the in-home piece. Actually, Partners in Learning offers that piece. So we offer it free for families that are able to come to us, but Partners in Learning is able to offer it at home if that's what parents need.
Do folks just voluntarily go to the Triple P? Are they required? Is there some group? Have you had them yet?
Yeah, so we, we take referrals. So, you know, Department of Social Services, just people in the community. Some people just sign themselves up. They find it on our website. We actually are getting ready to roll out a website that's tied to ours that is just for Triple P, just for what we do, so that parents can jump on there and register. And we have signs all over the county, so people can find us if they need us.
So you've had, how many of these events have you had?
Well, it's, it's group sessions, and so we're actually partnering with Smart Start Rowan and communities and schools. Communities and schools wrote a grant to collaborate together, and they fund some of these programs. So we've had at least 35 sessions so far since we've rolled the program out, but we are doing a lot of individual stuff, too.
So how many typically attend these group sessions or individual training?
Like 12 to 25 people. They're, they're smaller. You don't want it to be too big because people kind of still need to feel that intimacy when they're in that setting. But, you know, it just depends. And it seems so far, the, the more people hear about it, the more popular it becomes, and so our sessions seem to be growing in size, but, which is a good thing. We want to get more people involved. You know, and we've been teaching at schools, and some, some elementary schools have provided food, and people come to the session. So that's really helpful to try to reach more folks. Any other questions?
No, thank you so much, Beth. And for my colleagues, I just, you know, I, as I do all the quote "people" kinds of things with public health and social services and most recently Smart Start, but my friend, Mr. Green, has taken that one on. But over the last four years, what I kept running into over and over and over again is that we need to get upstream, and we need to help those parents who take a baby home just like we all did, and it didn't have an instruction book that went with it, you know, to help them become better parents. I mean, I know I could have used it when it was in my early 27 babies. So, you know, and I came, was very fortunate that I came from the family I did. But volunteering in one of our elementary schools, the classroom that I work in, nearly every one of those children has got several ACEs, I'm sure threes and ups. And it's really sad because most of those kids, what they really need is just, just love.
Yeah.
Yeah, because they'll flock to you and they just want to hug you and get hugged back, so...
Yeah. Well, and when you learn more about it, you know, we, kids in school or when you meet adults, we know, I know we've all been in meetings where, you know, people escalate quickly, you know, and seem to have a short temper. And what we know is, is, you know, if you're someone who has not experienced trauma, then if the, you know, if here's where you get to an explosive state, you have all this time to get there. But if you've experienced trauma, you're more like up here. And so your time to get to an explosive state is much shorter than someone who hasn't. And so really getting in and putting these things in place and helping these kids just makes a better workforce, a better community, more education. We just, it's just facts. So we're excited for the possibility, and we thank you for your time today. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Beth.
Thank you for being here, all of you.
And we do have a proclamation for Child Abuse Prevention Month. Whereas child maltreatment is a community problem, and finding a solution depends upon involvement among people throughout the community. And whereas child maltreatment occurs when parents find themselves in stressful situations without community resources and unable to cope. And whereas approximately 127,404 children were reported abused and were neglected in North Carolina in last, the fiscal year 2017. And whereas 51 children were victims of homicide due to abuse or neglect in North Carolina during the year 2016. And whereas the majority of child maltreatment cases stem from situations and conditions that are preventable in an, in an engaged and supportive community. And whereas the effects of child maltreatment are felt by whole communities and need to be addressed by the entire community. And whereas effective child maltreatment prevention programs succeed because of partnerships created among social service agencies, schools, faith communities, civic organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business community. Therefore, the Rowan County Commissioners do hereby proclaim April 2019 as Child Abuse Prevention Month in Rowan County, and calls upon all citizens, community agencies, faith groups, medical facilities, and businesses to increase their participation with our efforts, in our efforts to prevent child maltreatment and strengthen the communities in which we live.
Is that a motion?
Yes, sir.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I want to just add one more thing, is, and this is to everyone who is watching and are citizens of Rowan, that if you take one hour a week and spend it with a child, helping them read or reading to them or doing some type of activity with them, you will help this county immensely.
Well put. Thank you. All right, item number seven is budget amendments. I've had an opportunity to go through those. Do we have a motion to approve those?
Don't move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Board appointments. We've got a few. Ellis Cross Country Volunteer Fire Department, Steve Martin, James Hartman, applied for reappointment. Do we have a motion to approve those, too?
So moved.
Mr. Chairman, are there two openings? Okay.
Yeah, that's the way I took it. Yeah, it didn't, I actually didn't say, but that's a good question. So there's two openings? All right, so Steve Martin, James Hartman, we have a motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Home Healthcare Block Grant Advisory Committee. Nancy Brandt had resigned from that advisory committee, so we need to approve that resignation. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Uh, let's see. I don't think we really need to do anything on Local Emergency Planning Committee, do we? Okay, so he was approved by LEPC. Do we have a motion to approve him?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Liberty Volunteer Board of Trustees, Lisa Trexler, applied for reappointment. Two years, motion approved.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Town Rockwell Planning Board, Drew Town Rockwell Planning Board Drew Shaver applied for a three-year term as the ETJ member of the planning board. Rockwell Planning Board motion approved, Drew.
So moved.
All right, motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Scotch Irish Jason Boger and Robert Knox both applied for reappointment. And Mark Minius, Minus?
Yeah.
Minius, yeah, has applied as a new appointment. So, there are three openings for all, so all three would be for two-year terms. Motion to approve those three.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
In our packet says that we have 36 openings. This message is to the citizens, so please contact one of us or our county clerk and get involved here in Rowan County. It'd be a great place to throw down some leadership roots, start getting involved in the community, and that's a good thing. Anything else?
I'd like you to adjourn.
All right, we have a motion to adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you.